Okay, welcome everybody to the first session of the forum. This year's theme is empowering actions. What better way to kick things off than with our first special session highlighting our grant program and the amazing work our grant recipients have been doing? With that, I'll pass it over to Kendra, who was our first moderator of the day. Kendra is our partnership and grants coordinator, so she has been completely immersed in our grant program and is a big part of its success. Thanks so much Kendra, I'll pass it over to you now.
Thank you very much Maddie for that warm welcome. I'd also like to thank you Minister Smith and Sarah Rang for your great welcome and introduction to the Invasive Species Forum. We are extremely grateful to the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry for their generous contributions towards fighting invasive species in Ontario. As more than eighty projects wrap up, great gains earned through implementing projects in the fiscal year of 2024. Thanks to their investment of $500,000, we were able to grow our long-running microgrant program into the more comprehensive Invasive Species Action Fund, or ISAF. This new program was able to support two new streams of projects that tackled projects of greater scope. ISAF far exceeded our expectations through both the number of applications received, leaving us well oversubscribed, but able to fund sixty-four high-quality projects. The MRF also invested initial $250,000 to help combat invasive phragmaties throughout the province. Through this investment, we were able to support more than two dozen, two dozen, on-the-ground products from across the province to help stop the spread of this aggressive plant. The Invasive Phragmaties Control Fund was oversubscribed by seventy-five percent, highlighting the need for these programs and our communities. Overall, the ISU was thrilled with the quality and volume of organizations applying to both funds. We saw applications coming in from municipalities, conservation authorities, indigenous groups, community-based groups, and other NGOs from all corners of the province. For this special session, we are very pleased to showcase four grant recipients, two from the Invasive Species Action Fund and two from the Invasive Phragmaties Control Fund, who are here today to give presentations highlighting the great work the funds have empowered them to do. This session will then wrap with a presentation from the Invasive Species Centers as we provide an advanced look at the planning for our opening of the next ISAF cycles. As Minister Smith indicated, it will open on March 6th of 2024. We're going to start by hearing from two of our invasive phragmaties control recipients first, followed by two invasive species action fund recipients. If you have any questions throughout their presentations, please do add them to the Q and A, and if you have time at the end, we will try and address those for you. Our first presenter is Nicole Carpenter from Georgian Bay Forever, who will be giving us an overview of their project, protecting critical wetland assets through invasive removals. Thank you Nicole.
Thanks Kendra, I heard there was a little bit of an echo, so hopefully, please stop me if mine is echoing as well, but if not, I'm just going to get started. Okay, hi everyone, I'm Nicole and I'm the Science Projects Manager at Georgian Bay Forever. And I'm here to talk to you about our community-based approach to management of phragmaties for the health of water and wetlands. I'd like to thank everyone for listening and for the Invasive Species Center for hosting today and the wonderful Invasive Phragmaties Control Fund that has helped us achieve a lot of success in our projects. Georgian Bay Forever is a charity dedicated to scientific research and public education on Georgian Bay's aquatic ecosystem. Our mission is to protect, enhance, and restore the aquatic ecosystem of Georgian Bay for future generations by taking action and funding accredited research on water levels, water quality, and ecosystems. This presentation will highlight the methods, progress, and success of our community-based invasive phragmaties management across the southeastern Georgian Bay coast. Georgian Bay is amongst the most diverse ecosystems in the Great Lakes, composed of incredibly complex habitats. Protecting the plants and animals that make the bay what it is today also protects the thousands of people that rely on it for clean drinking water, recreation, and food. Our invasive phragmaties program has seen many years of challenges and success in Georgian Bay. I want to note that Georgian Bay Forever, we do manual removal, and we are really focusing on aquatic phragmaties growth, which involves using the cut-to-drown method. But we are also using spading when necessary, especially now that we're seeing lower water levels in Georgian Bay. Our work began eleven years ago when we quickly became aware of the need for phragmaties education and control across Georgian Bay. In 2019, we developed a five-year community-based control plan for nearly six hundred stands that were originally identified along the coasts of three municipalities. One of the key components to success of this program is collaborating with volunteers, municipalities, First Nations, and community groups all around Georgian Bay to create community leaders to undertake phragmaties monitoring and control, which will lead to a sustainable method of environmental management. A large part of this plan is to also offer summer employment to local students each year to assist in the program and spread education and awareness throughout the community. And they really take on the role of tackling large, difficult-to-access sites. These are sites that the community and volunteers are often not able to get to themselves. So since 2019, we've nearly doubled the number of stands under our management to one thousand and twenty and really increased our community involvement. So now we have five municipalities supporting us. We started with three and we've maintained those three through the course of the five years. These pie charts demonstrate the success we've had. So red represents sites left untreated. Yellow represents sites that are cut each year, and then green are sites that are seeing zero regrowth and we continue to monitor. This is all accomplished by training community groups who can then spread knowledge and manage the phragmaties properly on their own within their community, allowing us to refocus our efforts to new communities. So that, so at the end of the five years, we're kind of at that point now, we're not finished, but it really is because we have added so many, so many more people and sites and areas into our project. But this year, we put four hundred, at four hundred and ninety into that monitoring stage, and we cut over two hundred stands, which equated to over twenty thousand meters squared of phragmaties patches. Three hundred community members were educated, fifteen events were attended slash hosted by GBS, and we hosted six additional training workshops around the community. A trend that we have noticed, and I think many people notice this as well, our northern communities tend to have less phragmaties because the spread is less rapid and the coast is predominantly Canadian Shield, so not really ideal for phragmaties. But we know it still, it still finds its way to establish wherever. Communities further south have a higher density of phragmaties to deal with, as seen on the map here, so all of that red at the bottom. Our staff and summer students spend most of their time working in the southern areas, and this is to help decrease the size and number of these sites, hopefully making it more manageable for the local community. Once we get to a point where the community can manage it on its own, that's when we are able to relocate our efforts. The main reason for success here though is the dedication of these communities and the persistency to monitor and remove invasive phragmaties each year. So for example, we have cottage associations up in the archipelago who have been doing this for the course of our ten-plus-year project. Each year, we also strive to enhance our mapping capabilities to help track changes over time, fill data gaps, and analyze trends in phragmaties. We make a publicly available map that allows users to navigate the region and click on sites to learn more about them. So that map I showed in the last slide, that is, there's a link to it that you can click on and community members can actually go in and take a look at any data that's collected with that, with that specific point. We've also begun surveying for phragmaties with the use of a multispectral drone, and this was really to help with accessibility and limiting the disturbance to sensitive wetlands. And I just want to quickly thank Curtis Avery from Nipissing First Nation. Him and his team are doing very similar work on Lake Nipissing, and it really helped spark the idea for our team. So we've only begun the initial stages of this work, conducting flights and preliminary processing and analysis. Much more is to be done and will be done over the summer of 2024, but here you can see kind of a mosaic image where we were searching for phragmaties. And you can see it overlaying with a kind of an old satellite imagery image, and you can see the difference in that spatial resolution, which will help us identify, hopefully identify invasive phragmaties growing in habitat. We're able to create vegetation indices such as the NDBI's or Soil Adjusted Vegetation Index here to look at health of vegetation. But taking all of these things, putting it together, our goal is to use deep learning tools to specifically identify phragmaties apart from other vegetation using drone surveying and doing this from ear to ear. Thank you for listening, feel free to reach out. My email's not on here, but I can put it in the Q and A. If there's anyone with familiarity on vegetation classification using multispectral imagery and deep learning, I would ask that you please reach out or if you have any experience with drone mapping for invasive species, I would love to hear from you. So thank you, and that's it.
Excellent. Excuse me, thank you so much Nicole, that was great. Up next, we have our second presenter, Jessie McFadden. She is from the Lakehead Region Conservation Authority, and she'll be talking to us today about their project, the 2023-24 Thunder Bay Regional Phragmaties Collaboration. Thanks Jessie.
Thanks Kendra. Let me know if there's any issues with my presentation and I will dive right in. My name is Jessie McFadden and I'm the Watershed Biologist here at Lakehead Region Conservation Authority, and I'm very excited to get to share a glimpse of Northern Ontario phragmaties with you all today, as well as hear from so many experts across the province about their experience managing phragmaties. Quite similar, I'm sure, to other phragmaties working groups and collaboratives in the province. Thunder Bay Regional Phragmaties Collaborative has brought together a dedicated group of environmental organizations, resource management experts, and concerned citizens to share updates and resources on the status of phragmaties in our area. Unique perhaps to Thunder Bay and other parts of Northern Ontario is the situation we find ourselves in on the front end of the curve. And what I mean by that is in Thunder Bay, we are at what you might call a defensive stage in our management. Only in recent years has phragmaties established itself up here, and so far it's mostly limited to roadways, harbor ports, rail lines, and ditches. And so a large part of our efforts over the past two years of the collaboration has been mapping phragmaties and finding it. I suspect that having a map that looks like this one is a refreshing thought to most in Southern Ontario. Instead of entire stretches of roadside ditches overwhelmed by monocultures of the species, we still have manageable stands, mostly less than half a hectare in size. But what we lack up here in the north is some awareness and the ability to track its spread through on-the-ground surveys, just due to the vastness of wilderness in the region. One of Thunder Bay's best qualities, of course, is adding difficulties to the fight against phragmaties. The vast expenses of lesser-traveled wilderness, forests for miles, without human settlements is something cherished by most up here, but it makes it hard to know the limits of phragmaties spread. We're also home up here in the north to most of Ontario's remaining intact wetlands, making the prevention and further spread of phragmaties even more important. We are incredibly pleased here at the Conservation Authority to have assembled such a resourceful group to help champion phragmaties management in the region. The effective management at this stage of the game of every single known stand is incredibly important and worthwhile. The case studies of invasive phragmaties aggressive spread in the rest of the province certainly provides incentive for action in the north. And so far, we've been able to manage thirteen stands that have been treated and over thirty-five different groups and local biologists have assembled to help track, monitor, and manage phragmaties. We've also partnered with our local Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry Office, who has generously donated or supported management initiatives through funds and resources. And at this stage, we're emphasizing the importance of getting the word out about this work into the community, spreading the word through posters, news articles, radio ads whenever we can, and presentations is a focus, ongoing focus in our work. Because again, we need, we need that boots-on-the-ground help to be able to survey the entire region for phragmaties. As many habitats that would happily host species are not readily accessible and need off-road vehicles to access them. So we're hoping to engage anglers and hunters to help take on some of this monitoring with more of a community science perspective. This year, the Thunder Bay Regional Phragmaties Collaborative is planning targeted surveys using aerial imagery to narrow down areas to survey by foot. So for example, wetlands that are near to major roadways where phragmaties is known to occur would be targeted for further on-the-ground surveys. Another consideration, perhaps unique in the north in the fight against phrag, is that amongst the vast amounts of wetlands remaining up here in the north, native phragmaties, phragmaties australis subspecies americanus exists quite happily. In the first year of the collaborative, we mapped fifty-one stands of phragmaties, but only twelve of those were confirmed as invasive phragmaties. We differentiated between the two subspecies using a combination of field marks, measurements, and DNA test kits provided by the Invasive Species Center when we weren't sure based on field marks alone. Given the widespread occurrence of native phragmaties in the region, we've also wondered about the potential of hybridization. Hybrid phragmaties often show intermediate morphological characteristics, stem characteristics more indicative of native phragmaties with growth patterns more similar to invasive phragmaties. So these photos and iNaturalist posts just give an example of that. And this was done unintentionally, but you can see here that the same stand in the same location, based strictly on morphology alone, was identified as invasive in 2022 and native in 2023 by various naturalists and Plant ID experts. Realizing, of course, that hybridization is fairly uncommon, the examples in New York and Las Vegas, and our unique situation up here in Thunder Bay has us interested in looking more into this. So moving into 2024, the Thunder Bay Regional Phragmaties Collaborative would like to continue researching potential hybridization in the region, assessing other case studies, and gaining access to more DNA analysis. We hope to continue learning from Southern Ontario's experience, maybe even experimenting with a preventative approach wherever possible. And of course, continued surveying, mapping, and management of stands as our top priority. We are on behalf of the Conservation Authority and all the members of the Thunder Bay Regional Phragmaties Collaborative. We are beyond grateful to the Invasive Species Center for their ongoing support. And if you do have an experience that you think we'd benefit from hearing about up here in the north on the front end of the curve, maybe something you'd hope that you could have done differently, something you'd like to share, please do not hesitate to reach out. My info is at the bottom of the screen.
Thank you very much Jessie, that was great. We're now going to hear from a couple of our ISAF recipients whose projects tackled invasive species other than invasive phragmaties. And I would first like to welcome Nigel Lacomierak from the Tikamikshang initial back, who will be taking us through their project, reversing the spread of invasive species in a Tikamikshang initial back.
Thank you Kendra. Okay, I hope everyone can see my screen already. Good afternoon, my name is Nigel Lee Comiac. I am the Species at Risk Coordinator for Tikmikshang initial back. I've been with the organization for almost two years now. I'm here today to tell you about a Tikmachings project through the Invasive Species Action Fund, which we titled reversing the spread of invasive species in a Tikmachings initial back. So first off, the Tikmachings initial back First Nation is located in Notton, Ontario, west of the city of Sudbury, about a fifteen-minute drive. For our project, we decided to focus on tackling Japanese knotweed. Japanese knotweed is an established invasive species in a Tikmachings. And it has a strong presence in the Panache Cottage lease lots. The area where Tikmachings leases land to cottagers. This species was introduced to Tikmachings by cottage lot leases. Like most places, the plant was brought in as an ornamental plant, but it was also brought in as a means of privacy, basically acting as a fence when populations became dense. Unaware of how out of control it could get, leases would end up trimming the overgrown plants and dumping the plant material in the bush nearby, which just encouraged it to spread further. Here you can see some trimmings with a bit of knotweed growing around it. We used the best management practices for Japanese knotweed to plan the methods for our project. It was a very useful document. When I was writing the application, they have best management practices for quite a few species. And I would recommend using these documents as much as possible when making an invasive species project. The methods we came up with were fairly simple, cutting the plant and disposing of plant material in thick black plastic bags. The plastic bags were then left out in an area that gets direct sunlight. We'll leave them there for two to three weeks to kill off the rhizomes. Populations were monitored for regrowth and the process was repeated once again once the, once the plants reached their mature height. The goal behind repeated cutting is to help weaken the root system, and after repeated cuttings, the plants would be sprayed with herbicides to shock the system. Since the main area we were working in was along a frequently traveled road, we decided to put up signs and pylons as a safety precaution. The cutting was done with a simple pair of shears. Plants were cut near the base of the stems, since cutting the plant's roots can encourage it to spread. We found out there was too much plant material and it was too time-consuming to bake it all. So we ended up replacing our plastic bags with black tarps and wrapped it up like big tobacco ties in this ATV trailer here. One of the most notable outcomes of the project was improved road safety. We had quite a few comments from a handful of cottage lot leases thanking us for taking care of the problem. It was also nice to see beginning steps taken towards getting rid of this plant from the community, and we raised awareness within the community about the invasive species. Some of the conflicts that we came into with this project were administrative delays. I found by the time we got the project started, we were already well into the growing season. We also had to get permission from chief and council to carry out this project, since using herbicides in our Tikmachings is against our policy. And overall, we underestimated how long it would take to clear out the Japanese knotweed. It was a bigger job than we expected. It felt like we were clearing out a little forest. Our future plans are to turn this project into a multi-year project. Eventually, we plan to replenish the soil and plant native species where Japanese knotweed was cleared out. And we would like to expand our capacity to manage other invasive species within the community. Thank you, Mikwich Nakomik.
Thank you very much Nigel, Migwet. Next up, we are going to be hearing from Lindsay Champagne from the Gannaraska Region Conservation Authority, who will be telling us about their project, the GFC Revitalization, Building Long-Term Resiliency to HWA BLD and Other Invasive Species Within a Forest Management Context.
Thank you Kendra, I'm just gonna share my slides here. Oh my goodness. Right, hopefully everybody can see that all right. Good afternoon, my name is Lindsay Champagne, and I'm the Watershed Biologist at the Gannaraska Region Conservation Authority. Myself and the Gannaraska Region Conservation Authority forester worked very closely together on this project to build long-term resiliency to hemlock, willia delgud, beach leek disease, and other invasive species in the Gannaraska Forest Centre. To give you a, to give you a little bit of context to this project, it's important to know that the Gannaraska Region Conservation Authority manages the Gannaraska Forest, which is an eleven-thousand-acre red pine plantation and mixedwood forest. The GRCA manages the forest using sustainable civil-cultural practices that are outlined in the Gannaraska Region Forest Management Plan. The main forest management objective is to manage for a healthy, resilient, functional forest ecosystem and to manage towards eventual conversion to a natural pine- oak-mixedwood forest. This project was a continuation of a revitalization of the Gannaraska Forest Centre trailhead, which was actually a project in 2022 through the Invasive Species Action Fund microgrant strain. This project aimed at building long-term resiliency to hemlock, willia delgud, and beach leek disease through surveying and understory thinning. The GRCA is building a resiliency to beach leek disease and hemlock, willia delgud through understory tending in a plantation compartment adjacent to where the microgrant project had taken place. This will promote the growth and retention of healthy trees, beech trees, and hemlock trees in the regenerating plantation. This project has also targeted other invasive species that have colonized the understory, including mass amounts of buckthorn, autumn olive, invasive honeysuckle, burning bush, and scotspine. The removal of these invasive species will help to improve the understory growth for hemlock and beech, along with many other desirable native species. The action side of this project consisted of invasive species removal for a nine-point-one acre forest compartment. When looking at this compartment, you can see that it is broken up into four different areas. Areas one through three were completely treated for invasive shrubs, and the west side of the trail, which is marked in green, in area four was also completely removed. Originally, the plan was to basal bark this area with garlone. However, during the time of the project, garlone was on back order, and we had to be a little bit creative with our treatments. We conducted three different treatment methods, and we're going to use them as pilot projects to review their efficacy that we can implement in future projects. So one point five acres of this compartment was basal barked with garlone RTU, which came from our original stash that we had on hand. Three point five acres was cut and stump-treated with Roundup Weathermats. And then when garlone was available, the remaining four point one hectare acres, sorry, was cut and stump-treated with garlone XRT. Area one had mild infestation, and we are actually going to go forward with doing some planting of white pine this year. While the remaining sections are going to require further treatment cycles, but due to the help of but due to the help of the Invasive Species Action Fund, GRCA has built internal capacity to tackle these future treatments as well as other treatments on our own. As you can see from these images, the cut and stump treatments that were kind of thrust upon us allowed for a very nice visual appearance, which makes it very dramatic and impactful when visitors come to view this area. So beach leaf disease was first discovered in the Gannaraski Forest in September of 2022. And the GRCA forester wanted to ensure that we were very proactive with surveying and early detection and prevention. Seventy kilometers of trailside forest was surveyed with eight new instances being observed. The sightings were recorded and reported to MNRF for their records and also put on our records as well. Little is known or available regarding the best management practices for beach leaf disease. However, through discussion with MNRF, we found out that research in New York had been conducted thinning of beach leaf disease prone areas to reduce the favorable habitat for that pesky nematode. The nematode prefers humid, damp, thick understories. Therefore, by thinning those areas, the favorable conditions are reduced by that increased airflow. However, the area that we thinned was not an area containing beach leaf disease and therefore it's going to be used as a preventative strategy. With the detection of hemlock, willia delgud in Ontario, early detection surveys were prioritized to see if the Gannaraski Forest was a subject of this new invasive species. Visual inspections were conducted in fifteen stands, which equates to a hundred and thirty-nine point one hectares that contains substantial amounts of hemlock trees. Additionally, we partnered with the Canadian Food Inspection Agency to monitor for the hemlock, willia delgud using eDNA traps. Fortunately, no hemlock, willia delgud was discovered in our forest during the survey period, which is very exciting. Understory management of the hemlock followed the early hemlock, willia delgud civil-cultural management recommendations that are provided by the MNRF. And the objective was to build resiliency by lightly releasing the hemlocks to improve their growing conditions. As a result of the invasive species shrub removal, forty of the hemlocks in the area were lightly released and got a better fighting chance. Like many projects, we had a few small barriers. The main barrier that we encountered was the lack of hemlock or the lack of garlone, sorry. With the lack of garlone, we decided to cut and stump treat with Roundup Weathermax. While Weathermax offered a more cost-effective herbicide option with low application volumes, it actually introduced a challenge in terms of increased labor intensity. Since Weathermax requires applications within a narrow five-minute window, more staffers required on hand, as well as we needed to cut the shrubs, which we hadn't planned on, move the shrubs out of the way and also point out those freshly cut stumps that needed to be treated still. Despite this adjustment, the project successfully managed the invasive species while allowing for a more dramatic visual change. The overall contributions of this project are much larger than just the removal of the nine-point-one acres of invasive species and the releasing of forty hemlock trees. This project has prompted the GRCA staff to integrate similar projects into their standard operating procedures. It has helped build internal capacity through the purchasing of equipment and the increased experience and expertise in invasive species management. With the hiccup of not having garlone, it enhanced our preparedness and planning, which will translate into other projects throughout our organization and through other organizations who can learn from this. The most important, though, is by incorporating invasive species management into our regular forest management, it contributes to the overall improvements of forests of our forest and increases its long-term resiliency, not only to invasive species, but to disease and climate change. Aside from the special thank you to the MNRF through the Invasive Species Action Fund, I wanted to shout out to our staff that we have on hand. Without them, it would not have been possible, as well as our summer students who were out doing long surveys. And then Sharon Reed from the Research Centre in as a part of the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry for helping us with the best management practices for both beach leaf disease and hemlock, willia delgud. I know that was very fast, so if anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out to me and I'll share my contact information in the comments. Thank you so much and definitely take advantage of this program because it is phenomenal. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Lindsay. It's Colin Kassen here. I'm gonna cut in because we're a little tight on time here. So I want to thank Kendra for moderating the session as I get queued up and ready to go here. And thank the other three speakers, in addition to Lindsay, for presenting some great, excellent positive outcomes that were achieved this year through the Invasive Species Action Fund. So let's jump in. I am sharing screen. Okay, good. Hopefully you can see. Kendra, please jump in if not. So just a couple of updates. Wow, what a response to the summer of invasives that we experienced last year that Sarah mentioned off the top. And thank you to the AD groups who are busy implementing projects. You've got a few days left, so keep up the great work as you finish up and report out. I wanted to thank, of course, the Minister and the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry for their investment this year of $500,000 into our invasive species action fund program and a quarter of a million dollars through the invasive fragmites control fund. So $750,000 being spent very well achieving on-the-ground outcomes this year. So really excited to see that. And of course, a big thank you to everybody in the eighty recipients and project implementers who were busy on the landscape all summer, all fall, and even a few projects going into winter. Great work and thank you very much for your hard efforts. I've got some good news. As the minister said, we're very excited to be launching and starting to accept call for proposals as of March 6th, 2024. So this is the Ontario-specific granting program that is all species except for egg mighties. We're very excited to launch as of March 6th this year. So this is my job in the backend of this relay is to give you a little bit of quick information on what's to come. So first things first, we're looking at about a five-week intake period that's going to start as of March 6th. As the minister said, we've got three grant streams, same as last year, similar caps as last year as well. So micro grants, two and a half thousand, a $10,000 accelerated impact cap and the transformative action stream at a $50,000 cap. Term is again going to be kind of the spring into this time next year. And in terms of our priorities, you're going to have to wait until March 6th to understand what specific priorities. But as a bit of an early nudge, just want to note that I think they're going to be very comparable to last year. So micro grants, we're looking to support community-led projects all across the province on a wide range of species and on accelerated impact and transformative action, those higher-tier caps. We're looking for species such as those regulated under the Invasive Species Act. So keep an eye to those Ontario regulations for a bit of an early understanding of what's to come in terms of priority species. The other change that's going to happen this upcoming year, once we launch in just a few short days, is we're going to continue with what we've been doing last year, that optional webinar series. We found great feedback from proponents last year. So there are some early dates here. I'll put them in the chat as well because I know we're tight on time. Just wanted to let you know there's going to be some general information sessions to help you understand the guidebook a little bit more and some of the terms we're trying to put, as well as a couple other special interest ones that were available by request. So tips on how to develop a budget, if developing a budget is new for you in this kind of a framework, happy to help walk you through it a little bit, and then calculating in-kind contributions as well. So we're going to be using an online grant portal this year, just to make it a little bit easier to put all your documents into one place. So would welcome everyone to check that out. And where can you learn a little bit more about this launch? Again, we're going to launch on March 6th, so you've got a little bit of time to start dreaming up projects now and working with partners to develop those projects. And you can stay up to speed by visiting invasivesbccenter.ca backslash grants. And why not sign up for the email notification? So you will truly be the first to know once we launch. And also follow us on social media. We'll be happily sharing information right in advance of March 6th, once we're ready to go live with a launch. So really wanted to thank all the proponents this year and also those great projects that are being implemented right now. And thank Kendra for moderating a great session and looking forward to the next session in just one minute time. So thanks, everybody, and enjoy the rest of the forum.
Thanks, Colin, and thanks, Kendra, for moderating and all of our other speakers. It's so great to hear about all your amazing work. Make sure to tune into our next session starting right now, which is part one of our education outreach and community.